I would like to call the Peoria Public School District 150 Board of Education Meeting for January 11th, 2016 to order. Would you please call the robe?
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Wilkerson?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Boye?
Here.
Mrs. Pastner?
Here.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first on our agenda is the community recognition. Tonight, the Community Contribution Award recognizes First United Methodist Church of Peoria. Do we have a representative here or representatives? Oh, good. Oh, lots of them. I'm sure our friends from F-U-M-C can tell us when the partnership began, and that's what they call it, F-U-M-C. But in 2007, a study was done on the Adopt a School Program using F-U-M-C as a shining example of an adopt-to-school partnership. At this time, the church and at that time, the church and Irving School, Irving Primary Schools, had a relationship that included Bear Buddies, Pin Pal Programs, 52-member sponsored choir, 240-plus summer soccer students, lunch and buddies on the regular basis, habitat houses for Irving families, and monetary assistance. I'm going to invite our guests here tonight to talk a little bit about our relationship with you.
Welcome.
My turn? Thank you. I just want to point out something. In here, it mentions that I am Pastor Dan Phillips. I am not a pastor. They can attest to that. I'm the farthest thing from a pastor, but we appreciate the opportunity and appreciate the recognition on behalf of First United Methodist Church. I don't know exactly how long ago it was. I think Michael Uzi is a big part of the contribution, the effort, the blame for our relationship. We are so happy that he was the principal at Irving for so many years and helped us establish that relationship. I do know that some of the initial buddies that were first buddies and relationships that were first formed at Irving many years ago are still, in fact, relationships today. In fact, I heard over the Christmas holiday, one of the buddies met with their original buddy and they went out for lunch in Springfield, and that buddy's 27-years-old today and has their own family, and so it just, it goes on and on. When Irving closed and Lincoln took in all of the students, we knew that things were going to change, and we were so happy that Lincoln welcomed us with open arms and allowed us to come into the school and do what we do there. So, we're thankful for the privilege to be there, to share in the lives of the students and the staff at Lincoln, and we really look forward to growing in our relationship with Lincoln. We know that what you do and what we do is really one and the same, and that's to provide encouragement, love, and support to the students, to the staff, and to the families in our neighborhood there to the north of the church. So, we look forward to our relationship with the Elite Program at Lincoln, with the Avid Program developing, and the other things we want to be there with you as much as we can. So, we thank you very much.
Thank you, and you failed to mention you do the Backpack Buddies?
We do the Backpack Buddies. Shirley Mabus, Shirley Mabus, she could not get enough of District 150. She only worked for you for 25 years, and so she and Pat Louie, they do the Backpack Program, provide about 130 bags of food, four meals to each kid every weekend. We also have a group that plays Scrabble in the cafeteria.
Scrabble Buddies.
We do Birthday Buddies, so ages are grades K through 4. Each class is assigned one person who does the birthday party every month for all the kids that have birthdays that month. We bring in gifts and kind of take over the classroom for the teachers for a half hour. We might read books, we might play Bingo. That's what we like to do, but it's a lot of fun and we look forward to it.
Tutor Buddy?
Tutor Buddies, kindergarten through 4th grade, work with helping reading skills with the teacher's direction. We work with helping the kids out on a weekly basis with that.
Children's Choir?
Carol McPherson. The first year that she started the Children's Choir, there were how many, nine kids in the choir? This year, how many are there?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four kids in the choir, and even when we had that nine-member choir sing at one of our mission dinners, the pride that they showed and that just, it was just beautiful to see them sing, and it was really something. And now, there's some real depth to that choir, and it's a wonderful thing.
Great.
Yeah, if everybody could stand. Dr. Carol McPherson, Director of Fine Arts, Shirley Mabus, she does the Backpack Buddies. Jane Burkhardt, along with Carolyn Purzak and Kim Phillips, do the Buddy Program, and there's others that aren't here tonight.
After-school Art Club, Chess Club, and everything else.
And everything else. And we're also happy in the summertime to bridge the gap. In the summer months, we, for 17 years, have had a summer soccer program, the Morton Square Soccer Program, and we average about 250 5- through 12-year-olds that play soccer in the park every Tuesday night from 5:00 until 8:00. And we provide the coaches, the Park District provides the referees, and we provide the shoes and the socks and the shin guards and the shirts, and we have a great time. So, it's, we get as much out of it, I think, as the kids do, and we really appreciate the opportunity to work with you and to be a part of it.
Thank you. We appreciate you, and on behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Karat has a token, small token of our appreciation for you and the students.
First United Methodist. Thank you, Ms. Ross. First United Methodist, you said love, support, encouragement. You know how to do it well, and we just wanted to say we appreciate all the work that you've done for so, so many years, just to make a difference and not do anything else, and you're appreciated, the team is appreciated, and the church is appreciated. So, on behalf of the Board of Education and District 150, we thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good seeing you.
You too. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, awards and recognition. Peoria's Finest Teacher.
Good evening. Peoria's Finest Teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and/or reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winner's principal, Heather Young, and any faculty, friends, and family that are here in support of this month's winner. Our nominators of this month's winner are Janine Shum and Scott Schiefling. If you'll come up, Janine. And this month's Peoria's Finest Teacher is Mary Stecker at Manuel High School. Come on up, Mary. Congratulations.
The nomination for Mary Stecker states, "Mary Stecker is a deserving candidate for the Teacher of the Month Award. She's a veteran special education teacher in the severe and profound classroom at Manuel. Mary is a tireless advocate for the students and families in her program. She is adept at providing learning opportunities for the population she serves. She can regularly be found running the hallways at Manuel alongside one of her students who uses that for routine exercise. She is also seen with her students who ride a bicycle around the halls as part of their daily routines. Mary has worked closely with our student council to have her students included in our annual homecoming pep rally. Her students enjoyed the recognition they received as they were escorted to the center of the gym by Manuel cheerleaders. Mary Stecker is a valuable asset to the Manuel Special Education Department and serves as a great resource for department members at our school. Mary's teacher assistant Karen Smith stated that she has worked with Mary for 17 years. She's a wonderful person, coworker, and a dedicated teacher. She goes above and beyond for her students as well as staff. The highlight of our day is storytime when Mary passionately reads to the students. Mary's students embrace her and they are eager to listen and love her. Through her hard work and dedication, Mary's students have learned to do puzzles and ride bikes independently. If anyone deserves Teacher of the Month, it is Mary Stecker. And speaking from experience, when you walk into Mary's classroom, if you didn't know her and/or Karen, you wouldn't be able to tell who was the teacher in that room. That's how well they work together. Kim Grimes, a life skills teacher at Manuel, says Mary is an amazing teacher whose passion for teaching is evident in the way she makes learning a fun and positive experience for her students. It is apparent from the smiles and laughter I witness in Mary's students as I walk by her room or see her out in the halls, walking, running, and biking with them. I am certain that each of her students feel valued and loved by her. Mary is not only caring and compassionate with her own students, but also to the life skills students that have volunteered in her classroom. Manuel is fortunate to have such a hard-working, positive, and loving teacher as Mary. And also, Mary has some of her students here this evening. Morgan is a current student, and it's Tricia, right?
Holly.
Oh, Holly, I'm sorry. And Holly is one of her former students.
This could be hard for me to get through. It's very bittersweet because this is my last semester. I will be retiring in May. So, I very much appreciate, I appreciate the nomination. I just always say that God blessed me 33-years ago with placing me where He did in the district and with the students that I work for and the staff. I have worked with Karen 17-years, and just all the people that I've worked with, all the therapists, all the principals, just everyone that I've worked with, I've been truly, truly blessed to work for this school district, and it's just like seeing Holly tonight. I haven't had Holly for several years, but this is the love that I've been blessed to share with students, staff, and everyone. It's been a blessing for us. We've been, I was 11-years at Rowland Acre School, and then we've been 22-years at Manuel, and my students have been a blessing for Manuel, and all the Manuel students have been a blessing for my students. So, I really appreciate this award, and I'm, like I said, I'm the one that's been blessed and been able to share this experience with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Do you have any family members here? Do you have Manuel family and personal family here, right?
Yes.
Welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well-deserved. Congratulations. I've worked with Ms. Stecker for many, many years, and I'm Karen, and Ms. Shum, and Mr. Schiefling, thanks for taking the time to fill out the application and to recognize Ms. Stecker. Thank you. We appreciate all the great things that you're doing for kids. Good seeing you again.
Give him a couple minutes to go. Thank you all for braving the cold coming out.
Thank you. Each month, we recognize the top three schools' improvement attendance overall from the previous month. This year compared to last school year, tonight, we would, we look at December's attendance rate. So, tonight, we're going to look at December's attendance rate. In December, all but two schools increased attendance when comparing last year's numbers, comparing 2015 to 2014 for December attendance. Tonight, we will recognize the top three improvements for the month of December. And actually, what I'd like to do is ask the three schools to all join me if they're here. Heinz is one, Glen Oak is one, and Peoria Heights. Peoria High, so Heinz, if you're here, Glen Oak. Do we have any representative from Glen Oak? But listen to this. So, in third place, increasing attendance by 3%, which is amazing, is Heinz Primary School. In 2015, Heinz had a 90, actually a 92% attendance rate in December compared to 95% this December. Isn't that amazing? From 92 to 93. Great job, Mr. Dur.
Thank you.
You're welcome. What are some of the things that you're doing to get such great increases?
Well, in December, we ran attendance incentive. So, students who had perfect attendance for the, from December 1st through December 18th just received a little free meal from AdVani. So, just the small things, the small things work, and you know, we made a big, big deal about it, announcing it, you know, every day, and announced the big winners last week. So, it really seemed to work.
Yes, it's working. Thanks. Congratulations. Good job. Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Dur. And in second place, increasing attendance by 3.96% is Glen Oak. They had an 89.6% attendance rate last December and increased it to 93.56% this year. So, kudos and congratulations to Glen Oak.
Yeah.
That's very good. Let's say from 90% to 94%. I'm rounding, but that's awesome. And then, our largest increase in attendance during the month of December is Peoria High School again. Ms. Elliott, Peoria jumped from 81% in December 2015 to 85, 86% in December of 20, actually 2014, 2015. So, your increase is actually about 5%. That's amazing. So, you're about 86%, right? So, tell us some of the things that you're doing, and then I'm going to add some additional pressure on Peoria High. But kudos to Peoria High. Can we give them a nice round of applause? From 81% to 86%, right? From 81 to 86. What are some of the things that you're doing at Peoria High?
A few of the things that we've done are, we have monthly celebrations honoring, I mean, total over 4,000 students, almost 1,000 per month. We've done perfect attendance, we've done 90%, we've done 95%. We have grade-level competitions as well during the month in order to keep that going throughout. Dr. Karat has supported Peoria High running a pilot attendance plan. It's a five-page document that has four pages of supports and celebrations, and then the last page is one page of real teeth. So, as we're on a district-wide committee, we're looking at this, I'm highly encouraging the board to look at making sure the new attendance plan coming through will be tiered for primary, middle, and high school, and especially for the high school have some teeth, which really addresses that 80% of the entire school population to understand that we have to be at school each and every day. Along with that, I would like to share, we just shared this with the staff as well, it's the culture of the building that consistently is changing in a positive direction. In four years, we dropped discipline referrals, major discipline referrals, by 11,700 per year, and we, at the semester, were down another 31% of that, and our suspensions from last year to this year are down 49%. So, the teachers are working, just doing tremendous things with our students, starting with building relationships with them, and the students are stepping up, so we're very proud of them.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, most improved attendance for the month of December, kudos to you, and the charge is we're going to try to shoot for 90%, hit that 90% mark, okay? So, congratulations. We're proud of you. Keep it up. Keep up the great work. Thanks.
Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment, when you talk about the culture of the building and the changes, in a part-time job I have, I'm out in the high schools three or four different times a year, and I can attest that at all three high schools, the culture has definitely changed, particularly at Manuel and most definitely at Peoria High. It is amazing when you walk in that building and deal with the students during a lunch hour and one-on-one, what a difference four years has made in our high school. So, kudos to all of the high schools, particularly Peoria High, for what you're doing over there.
Thank you. Okay, under announcements, we'll start with the Parent University. Yes. First, I'd like to say Happy New Years to everyone. Glad to see everyone back and working hard. Our next parent university is fast approaching and will be held on January 21st at Woodrow Wilson Primary School. Special thanks to the Woodrow Wilson staff and students for sharing information about their school on the boards behind us. Principal Evelyn and Assistant Principal White is here to share tonight more about the Special Parent University this month, scheduled to begin at 5:30 PM on January 21st. Welcome.
Hi there. I'm Rachel Evelyn. I am the principal at Woodrow Wilson. Each day at Woodrow Wilson, part of our morning announcements include a Badger Pledge, which is found up there on that board in the middle. It's also posted all over our building, and it's very important to us. It's a pledge that comes from Peoria High students. I'm going to give you a sample of what it's like. I am the voice. I will lead, not follow. I will believe, not doubt. I will create, not destroy. I am a force for good. I am a leader. I will defy the odds. I will settle new standard. I will step up, step up, step up. And that's kind of our motto throughout the day. There are bits and pieces of it all over the building that we stress to students pretty much all of the time. At Woodrow Wilson, we are combining social skills instruction and academic instruction to build the best Badgers. We use programs such as Second Step and Y Try daily in addition to the district academic curriculum to assist students in their social-emotional learning. The Y Try program is one of the keynote sessions at our upcoming Parent University on January 21st and will be led by the founder of the Y Try program and author of The Resilience Breakthrough, Christian Moore. All guests at the Parent University will receive a copy of his book. This program is used all over District 150 and in over 16,000 schools and organizations with 2 million students and counting. I personally have taught the program. I've seen the program taught, and I'm a huge supporter of this program. We hope you will come hear from this nationally-known speaker in addition to attending two of the workshops that we will offer that night. Other workshops for parents to choose from during the remainder of the evening include Technology and Home Connections, Engage New York, the Questions and Answers, Signs of Denial, Developing Language in Young Learners, Interventions in How to Help Your Struggling Students, Affordable Health Care, and the Win-Win Discipline Program. The evening begins with a free spaghetti supper starting at 5:00, and our keynote speaker will start at 5:45 in the gym. We will offer shuttle buses from the bowling alley, catty-corner from Woodrow Wilson because of our limited parking, our parking lot's very limited. More information will be available this week on our district website, including a link to RSVP. We're so excited to host the district event and hope to see all 27 schools at Woodrow Wilson next Thursday night, January 21st, starting at 5:00, to learn what our Badgers have been working on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Principal?
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you.
The Peoria Public Schools Preparatory School for the Arts, or PSA, at Peoria High School will hold entrance auditions at each district middle school Thursday, January 14th through Thursday, January 21st. PSA faculty in orchestra, band, choir, and drama, visual arts, and dance will conduct the auditions. All district 8th-grade students will participate in the auditions. Acceptance letters will be sent in February, at which time families can determine whether PSA is the best choice for their student. 9th through 11th-grade Richwoods High School and Manuel Academy students and current non-district 8th to 11th-grade students that live in or will live in the district's attendance boundaries also are eligible to audition for the PSA. To arrange an audition, visit our district website to find the appropriate contact information at Peoria High. A similar process is being planned for all rising 5th-grade students in District 150 for auditions to Roosevelt Magnet School for the Arts. That process is expected to begin in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements?
Thank you. Franklin Primary will host an Avid Advanced via individual determination national showcase on Wednesday, January 13th, from 8:45 to 1:30. This is the same time Franklin has, second time Franklin has served as an avid showcase school. On November 17th, 2014, Franklin staff and students welcome staff members from schools in Champaign, Springfield, Oswego, and District 150 teams. This week, Franklin will showcase their school's students and staff and Avid's success to schools in Wisconsin, Elkhorn, McQuan, Thinsville areas, and Illinois, Elgin, Champaign, Danville, Springfield, and Oswego. Avid showcases are an opportunity for educators to share best practices and learn more about the Avid College readiness system. Franklin is one of only a few opportunities across the country to allow other districts to attend an Avid elementary showcase. The event gives visitors a chance to speak and experience Avid site, team members, and students. That's January 13th from 8:45 to 1:30.
Other announcements? Do you have any?
I'm going to respond. Yes.
Pidesential. Who is Pidesential?
Well, and I'll proceed. In conjunction with local business and community leaders, Dr. Karat will welcome a local nonprofit business, government, and educational agency leaders to a special presentation this coming Friday, January 15th, at Jump Trading Simulation and Education Center, which is located at 1306 North Berkeley Avenue. That will start at 1:00 PM. The planned presentation will include opening remarks from Dr. Karat and a panel presentation from leaders involved with the Alignment Rockford Movement. More than 100 leaders from the greater Peoria community have RSVP'd for the event, and additional people are welcome to attend. You can respond and reserve a spot by visiting our website at www.psd150.org/alignment. According to its website, Alignment Rockford employs a process to design and pilot tactical solutions in areas of greatest strategic need for Rockford public schools. AR's mission is to coordinate community resources in order to raise student achievement, improve the health and happiness of our children, and advance the economic and social well-being of the community. Dr. Karat, along with several key community and business leaders, visited Rockford last fall and felt that pieces of the alignment model may be beneficial as we look to collaborate further as a community. We invite the public to join us as we learn more about the Alignment Rockford model this Friday at 1:00 PM at Jump Trading Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Reading Buddies update?
I think it's been about a month since I updated you the last time, so I wanted to let you know that we've at least doubled our Reading Buddy volunteers, and I think a lot of that credit should go to Pam Adams at the Journal Star. Her article helped us out a lot. WMBD and WEK allowed us to go on the news station several times, and then WPNV radio station also featured us, I think, this past weekend, so we've had a lot of exposure, and it's shown, because my emails are flooded right now, and so are my voicemail, my mailboxes almost every single day. So, I wanted to highlight a couple things. One of the goals that we're working on is we want to make sure that there's a business or some kind of community organization with every school, at least one big group. And we don't have that officially right now, but I can bet you by the next time I come up here, we will, because I've already got them lined up. I'm just waiting for some official paperwork to come back from some background checks. But I wanted to highlight a few. The Peoria County Courthouse, specifically the Adult and Juvenile Probation Group, is going to work with Glen Oak. The Peoria Riverfront Museum is going to work with Harrison. Illinois Mutual is working with Woodrow Wilson. First United Methodist Church is working with Lincoln. SEFCU is working with Roosevelt. Southside Bank is working with Whittier, and I don't know if you saw, they were featured on the news. One little girl gave a great little interview, too, about fluency and all that, so she knows what she's doing there. Federal Companies is working with Franklin. Commerce Bank is working with Treewin. RLI is working with Keller. RE/MAX contacted me just recently. They would like with Keller. RE/MAX contacted me just recently. They would like to work with Thomas Jefferson, and they also sent out all the information to all the realtors in the area, so they'll be giving that information out to people when they come to the Peoria area who might want to volunteer as well. And then I'm going to give a big kudos to the Peoria Chiefs. They've given us many things I want to highlight. Specifically, they're going to send many volunteers, not just to form teams, but they're going to come as individuals every week. So, they'll service more kids than people who form teams. And I understand that the team concept, because it's easier for the businesses to volunteer that way, but the Peoria Chiefs are making sure that each one of their volunteers comes each week. In addition to that, they're also giving us two dates in the spring in which their players are going to come read at our schools. So, we're going to plan those when the players arrive, but I think that'll be great for our kids. I mean, those are future Cardinal players, so how awesome is that, right? Surely better than the Cubs, we all know that. I'm not biased.
Terry's behind you.
Hey, no, my grandpa played for him, so I have to be loyal. So, all the Reading Buddies volunteers, all of them, anybody who commits as a volunteer and consistently shows up, they are going to give them a free ticket to the May 20th game and four tickets for their family. So, they're giving enough for every volunteer's family to go to that May 20th game. In addition to that, we're working with them to form like a hybrid program where not just students who are involved with Reading Buddies, but every single 3rd grade student who might not be assigned to a Reading Buddy, but we're going to plan a program where those kids have goals to read so many minutes with an adult each week, just like a student with a Reading Buddy would. And those students who meet those goals will have an opportunity to get a ticket to a game to be named later, as well as get discounted tickets for their family. So, they've really, really stepped up to try to help us get more volunteers. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with Bradley University to meet with Dr. Kean Two and Jane Cushing. We're going to discuss how to incorporate the Reading Buddies program into some of the requirements for clinical, the clinicals for their education majors. So, not only are we going to be helping future teachers get some experience with students, but that will ensure that we have some Reading Buddies every single year and future teachers. And then, I already mentioned the Realtors Association. And then, in addition to that, we have a plethora of individual volunteer packets coming in. So, once we start to form those into groups, I think we're going to be off to a really, really good start for this year. But the businesses who have stepped up this year, we're going to try to form relationships with schools so that they want to go back to that school every single year and have relationships with the staff and know what to expect. So, in a month's time, we've come a long way, and I just expect to get more. So, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, speaking of Ms. Steele, thank you, Ms. Steele. She mentioned Bradley University, and one of the things I wanted to mention, we're also teaming up with Bradley University regarding the attendance initiative. They're very, very supportive, and they're also interested in kids attending school every day. Bradley has provided us with tickets for students who have great attendance, and students with excellent attendance during first semester receive two vouchers prior to the holiday break. And while two games have passed, there is still one more game. That's that January 16th game against Missouri State at Carver Arena that students can also attend. So, thank you to Dr. Reynolds and his team. We've met several times, and we're continuing to collaborate around providing tickets for not only students, but also our teachers. So, again, great collaboration.
Thank you. Okay.
School environment matters.
School environment matters. Mr. Adler.
So, Peoria Public Schools is joining the Illinois State, oh, did I totally?
No, you're okay.
Go ahead.
[laughing]
Okay. Is joining the Illinois State Board of Education in the fourth statewide survey of school climate learning conditions. So, starting today through March 11th, teachers, students, and parents will be asked to take a 20-minute research-based survey to help identify strengths and weaknesses in their school's learning environment. So, it's important that our parents, students, and staff from each of our 27 schools participate in the survey to make their voices heard and impact change. The district appreciates and is proud of the work that we're accomplishing and the relationships we are building, and this tool will only advance our progress further. We use this year as a baseline data, and as outlined in our strategic plan draft, we'll look to the measurement as part of our scorecard over the next five years. Illinois Five Essentials Survey provides a comprehensive picture of a school's organizational culture in an individualized report measuring five essentials critical for school success: effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involved families, supportive environment, and ambitious instruction. So, we invite public to visit the district website, www.psd150.org, to find the Five Essentials icon and begin the survey. Students will need to enter the state student ID, which is a little bit different than their lunch ID, and the survey is only for 6th graders and up. So, you can get that information from staff during the day. Teachers should have already received an invitation from their survey site with a unique username and passcode, and parents don't need any credentials. They can just log in and complete. So, principals in our district office will receive their Five Essential reports in May, and the survey results will also be reported publicly to the 2016 State School Report Card website and released in the fall. So, yeah.
Susan, Ms. Gershness, did you have?
Pretty much.
If you have any questions, she'll answer.
I would say we do need 50% of student response and 50% of the staff response, and then 20% of parent responses to get the data back. If we're less than that, they don't provide us with the data. It's a really nice picture, too, that they give you graphically of the data that we will, we've intended on. I believe the AI has talked about hanging those in the school offices so that those are something they can work on throughout the next year.
It's only 20 minutes, and we would really love the parents to get online and help us out, give us some feedback. As Mr. Adler said, we would like to look at that baseline data and compare it over time, five years, and we're definitely looking for improvement. So, this is an opportunity for parents to provide us with feedback around those five essential areas that you've alluded to.
Question?
Yeah, question?
Yeah, I believe this was done prior years.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not exactly sure how those results were presented, because I don't know if that was ever reported by the state, was it?
It was, I think, it was not necessarily fully endorsed. We're really asking everyone, the 6th graders and up, and we're definitely looking for parental participation and teachers. And over time, over time, then we will look for improvement over time. I think initially what happened, districts overall were sort of tentative because it was still relatively new, and they weren't sure about the reporting and how it was going to be reported. And there were some errors initially. This is all part of the University of Chicago Impact Project. Now, they've refined, they've refined the survey, and it's much, much better than when it first rolled out. There were some errors, and so districts didn't really, and the state actually did not really publicize it necessarily.
It's actually also on the state's report card. You can find the data. Engraved to the top districts were required to do it, and it was optional for other districts.
Okay. So, this really, that really didn't consist of a baseline at that point. It's really not useful for that purpose. This is the sort of starting over again, or it was their beta test.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Ms. Gershness, your, Dr. Carat? Okay. Thank you. We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board. As you are, as you know, we are volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria District 150. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible. Outside of these meetings, our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, psd150board. We recognize that three minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. Our board secretary will collect, will be collecting those comments after each board meeting to compile and share with the board and the superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for the records. Each speaker has three minutes, and no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. The first speaker is Mr. Terry Knapp. Welcome. I haven't seen you since last year.
It's been a while. Florida was a good place to be. First of all, I'd like to say, a month or so ago, one of the board members said that we can't undo, or we can't redo, what has already been done. I'm glad, Dr. Carat, that you've seen it necessary to revamp or redo the way our grade schools are configured. I think it's very important that we redo that because it makes no sense whatsoever, and it changes from year to year with no apparent reasoning. I think it's very important to take a year or at least nine months. The last time we did this was five years ago when we closed Woodruff, and it occurred over a two-month period, with no input from the community on the north side, which is the oldest neighborhood community in the city, by the way, the Averyville-Kingman neighborhood, was not even consulted. And we closed the school as a rushed judgment so we could hurriedly get the Charter School in place, Quas Charter High School. You know, Mr. Barton and others had to have that, and within two months, and they got it done, thanks to some of the board members voting four to three to close Woodruff. I think everything should be research-based. You know, we talk about research-based all the time, and it should be research-based. I've asked that, for example, that the Valeska Hinton School be researched to see if it's even doing the job that it's supposed to be doing. If the kids are more successful when they graduate, we've had at least four or five graduating classes. It would be easy to do that. Matter of fact, a lady from the board, I mean, from the administration, said it could be easily done, and it's never been done. I think it's very important, because I rushed out the next day and went up to Kingman, and I drove from Kingman to Woodruff, one mile. I'm convinced that the kids at Woodruff, unless they're, they were busing five years ago like they are now, across the street and around the corner, as was said at the board meeting last time, but one mile, I'm sure that those kids weren't even bussed. And then, all of a sudden, they went to Central, and Central's two miles from Kingman, and they had to be bussed or were bussed. And the busing distance over the year was 704 miles. Now, we're talking about sending these kids to Manuel, and I drove that, it's five miles to Manuel from Woodruff, excuse me, from Kingman, and round trip, 10 miles, which is 1,760 miles a year, which is 7,040 miles for four years, and that's the distance from New York City to Los Angeles, back to New York City, and back to Colorado in four years on a school bus traveling about 20 miles per hour. I can't imagine any student liking that, especially when five years ago, they weren't even bussed. You know, and shame on you for putting these kids on a bus without researching that, because I think you'll find out, find out if you research it, that the North End kids, the Averyville-Kingman kids have dropped out. They don't want to be bussed. They don't want to go to another neighborhood with another gang affiliation like they had to go to Central with another gang affiliation. It's nothing but disruptive to those students. It's nothing but disruptive to those parents.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Have a great day.
Ms. Sharon Cruz?
The advantage of having a superintendent that knows Peoria and Peorians is evident by Bradley's gift of 5,300 basketball tickets to use as rewards for students. Remember last year, the district paid for tickets. Also, I applaud this administration for holding a special jobs fair in December in the hopes of filling teaching jobs and other positions. Also, I am pleased with the efforts to revive the district's music program and the response from the community in helping with the need for musical instruments. I certainly appreciate Dr. Carat and Susan Gershness's efforts to answer my questions about Compass Learning, students' questions that did not lend themselves to inquiries through the FOIA process. I wish I could say that I learned, that what I learned gives me more confidence in Compass Learning. I still see summer school as the only effective way of students to make up failed courses. The Compass Learning requirements meet the Illinois Standard Course of Study, and the Curriculum Department has identified the content. For purposes of credit recovery, Compass Learning divides a course's content into modules. Each module addresses specific components of a course. Each module requires 25 hours at the computer and earns 5/10ths credit if a student completes 80% of the work with the required minimum hours and receives a 60 or above on the unit test. Students cannot do any work at home. Credit recovery grades do not replace failing grades on the transcript. The F remains on the transcript. The grade is recorded as a credit recovery grade. These answers gave rise to the following questions. How many modules at 25 hours each must be taken to earn a semester grade? Who decides which or how many modules must be taken to make up for a course failure? How does a partial course grade, just one or two modules, show up on the transcript, and how much credit is given? How many modules are required to make up a failed course? Are credit recovery grades pass or fail, or is a letter grade earned? Can credit recovery grades raise or lower grade point averages? If a student doesn't make up a required course with Compass Learning, how or when is the course retaken? To me, this system does not present a consistent, fair, or viable way of making up courses. Please find a way to return high school, summer school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabino Sierra.
Sabino Sierra, 1708 South Stanley in the South Side. I, like I say, I hope we can get that grant of 15 million so we can do a little repair work on our physical plants. I've been after you people to take care of that. In fact, I had a list that I spoke up, and a lot of it hasn't been done. What you did do is you put in a lot of new money at Peoria High, which, and let the other physical plants, the schools, the high schools, the grade schools go by the wayside. And every time you let it go, it'd get worse, you know? And this is one of my pet peeves, because I worked in the, what do you call it, the skilled trades all over, and I know what should be done, but a lot of people don't listen, you know? I guess they think just because they have a degree, you know, that they know quite a bit. But I hope that we get this money, and we listen to some of the people and their ideas and their opinions and what has to be done now, not, you know, like a lot of the roofs and all that, you know, and air conditioning, stuff like that. You spent too much money on Peoria High when we had everything at Woodruff High School. You should have, you should have kept Woodruff alive, you know? Like, a lot of these older grade schools, you want to get rid of them, some of them, you want to knock them down because they were getting old. What do you think about Peoria High? You go into the hallways, and you see the floors, they're all cracked and everything. Outside, the lions are decaying, things like that, you know what I mean? You let go after you've been told about them. And so, I hold you people responsible for all that negligence. So, I hope- So, I hope that we do better in the coming year, because I'm going to be watching you, and I'm going to be criticizing you if you don't get stuff done like you should. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sierra. Any response to audience presentation?
If Ms. Cruz could provide that list of questions, possibly the staff could respond directly to those.
We'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything, just, okay. All right, information items. Peoria Teacher Education Pipelines, Illinois State University.
First of all, we would, go ahead, Dr. Cruz.
Thank you, Dr. Winters, for being with us. And April, they're part of the Illinois State University faculty and staff, and there's an opportunity to collaborate with, with the university and Dr. Robert Lee regarding teacher pipelines specifically from a department called Urban Teachers Center. And so, I've asked them to join us this evening, board the, I wanted you to hear a little bit of the idea, and then there could be further discussion. So, thanks for being here this evening, Dr. Winters and Ms. April.
You move that mic up, if you like. It's just.
Thank you all, first of all, for having us here, especially on such short notice. I want to say, my name is Venus Evans-Winters. Besides being a proud parent here in District 150, as well as a former educator here in the city of Peoria, I'm also an Associate Professor of Education at Illinois State University. And my role here today is to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the teacher pipeline program and our preparation for future educators in the area of STEM, with a specific focus on preparing our future teachers to work in high-density urban communities with intentional focus on recruiting and retaining teachers who are culturally competent. And I'll let April now speak specifically about the program, and I'll answer any questions related to curriculum and/or pedagogy.
And I'm with Venus, and I want to thank you again for giving us the minutes to review the pipeline with you this evening. The Illinois State University's Chicago Teacher Education Pipeline is grounded in social justice and works to cultivate and sustain innovative, resilient, and effective educators for urban schools and their communities. The Chicago Teacher Education Pipeline was established in 2004 to prepare future teachers for the rewarding challenges of an urban education environment. We currently partner with schools in four distinct Chicago neighborhood communities: Little Village, Greater Auburn-Gresham, Albany Park, and East Garfield Park. In 2015, we received an expansion grant to expand the pipeline's framework into the Pilsen Neighborhood in Chicago, Decatur, Illinois, and Peoria, Illinois. The pipeline has carefully constructed and refined model of pre-service professional development for an urban teachers that demonstrate the value of community-based partnerships to enhance shared educational goals. The CTEP programming sequence consists of redesign university courses with the urban education emphasis, clinical experiences, a summer teacher education partnership for urban preparation fellowship opportunity called Step Up, and year-long pre-service teaching experience called Professional Development School, which is currently being implemented at Central High School, looking at the possibility of possibly being able to provide that opportunity with the two other high schools in the district, and also being able to instill a semester-long sixteen-week experience that would immerse the teacher candidates into our community here in Peoria. In addition to that, the last part of the sequence is an induction to mentoring. We, the pipeline watches and mentors for the first two years the graduates that take advantage of the pipeline program. Through CTEP, ISU builds bridges between universities and communities by integrating research, teacher preparation, and community involvement. By living, teaching, and learning in partner communities of practice, teacher candidates can learn more about their role as teacher as it fits into the, together with the social, cultural, and educational landscape of the targeted community and school. Together, we build bridges to guide future teachers as they actualize social justice for social change into their philosophy as teachers and citizens in democratic society. Our main objective for the Peoria Teacher Education Pipeline is to assist with preparing and orienting secondary education STEM pre-service teachers into the field of education. We are asking the Peoria Public School Boards for support for the implementation of the Peoria Teacher Education Pipeline. I know that was a mouthful. Firstly, for me, I've lived in Peoria for the last five years. I've had the pleasure of supporting District 150's work from the outside in. I personally, after, within my ten years of experience in the field, I've noticed that it's really going to take the investment in the teacher, like we had just observed this earlier in our meeting, the relationship that a teacher has with a student is priceless. And for me, it's quite personal. I want to help, I want to help enrich the lives of the next generation of teachers, because it's really what, that investment in the teachers is what's going to make the difference with the academics that the students in our district will receive, and it's quite personal for me. And I just am thankful for the opportunity to be able to share this idea with you all this evening.
Are there any questions at all?
Well, I don't really have a que, well, I guess it's a question. You know, I attended a conference for African-American administrators in higher education professionals. And I was amazed that there were about five thousand people that looked like me, basically looking at ways to enhance the education of minority students. And one of the things that came out of this, this whole thing was the fact that many of the teachers that we have in urban educated, educators, many of our urban educators are not really ready for the audience that they get when they come out of school. So, it's nice to hear, you know, you doing something about the higher education piece. And Dr. Winters, I've worked with you many years, so I know that we were in good hands there.
And I've gotten to meet alumni that have taken advantage. It's life, transformationally, life-changing for those undergrad students.
And being on the faculty side, I can say, being, I've been a part of the Chicago Teacher Preparation Pipeline for quite some time now, as an intentional faculty member who is recruited to teach some of these tougher issues that our teachers will find when they come into the classrooms and/or the communities. As you know, Ms. Ross, it's not always just about what's going on in the classroom, but also the community and where our future teachers want to be placed and live their lives and raise their families. So, a part of my job is not only to teach them the sociological and psychological aspect of teaching, but also to teach them how to be diversified across cultures, but also to introduce them to the resources around a city and a community, so that this is a place that they want to live and raise a family. And I know for sure, as a parent and professional here, that Peoria is a great place, and I was the strongest advocate for it coming here to Peoria. I can say that.
Wonderful. Ms. Withmeyer?
So, I just want to make sure I understand. This is a, like, a course, or set of courses, that, that your teachers, who are going into teacher education, can choose to take, or is it just a different? Is it a totally, it's a little of both?
It's, it's both. I'm proud to say that eighty professors in the School of Education have redesigned their coursework to incorporate urban education.
Okay, so they're taking regular, the regular coursework they normally would, but the course has been redesigned to, do the students opt into these classes, or are they just there?
A little of both. Some students opt into it because they accidentally don't know what, you know, what, what section they're taking. But I've had the pleasure of getting to be, it's about the recruitment. It's about word of mouth. Our, actually, our Step Up graduates are our best advocates for educating the next generation of students about, about our, about what we do with the pipeline. What we find is hitting the transfer students. Just within the six months that I've been a part of the pipeline, I've, I've met thirty Peoria-bred people that have graduated from Peoria area that are wanting to come back to teach in Peoria. And I feel like that's going to be, it's word of mouth. So, it's working with, and what I've noticed is sixty-eight percent of the College of Ed population come from north of I-80. The remainder is downstate. I think if we can get, get a collaboration made with ICC, for example, to learn about the transfer students that would be majoring in education, we'd be creating that investment as they're preparing and orienting not only to ISU, but to Peoria as a whole. And it's, it's actually just, it's interesting. I've seen the light bulbs turn on for the students that take advantage of it. And the professors, the STEM faculty are excited to come to Peoria. We had a, I had, I did, was able to host one professor this past fall. She was quite excited. We went over to Central. She had six students with her, and the word has gotten out. And I have more professors interested because of closer proximity. Chicago's three hours' drive from campus, and with Peoria only being a forty-five-minute drive, we're able to provide more of an experience. I, I see the bridge piece. I see myself being able to strengthen a relationship for the district to ISU. I can see myself building bridges with all the various faculty, advisors, and so on, to help strengthen the relationship.
It does have a secondary STEM program focus. Can you talk a little bit about, can you share that with the board also?
So, the focus of it is the secondary STEM, and I think that has a lot to do with, alluded to the fact that the research out there, be able to keep a STEM educator within five years, it's, the burnout rate is within two, finding resilient and effective STEM educators. So, and the emphasis within, the fact that math and reading, math and science is the future for our children. So, that was one of the reasons why STEM was chosen. Plus, STEM doesn't have an emphasis yet within the Professional Development School, and they wanted to strengthen that a little bit and create more of a recruit, more of a feeder system for student teaching, and to be able to provide more STEM Ed students, candidates to Peoria for STEM Ed.
So, it's a long-term investment, actually. We won't, let's say, for example, we agree to collaborate with them. We probably won't get any teachers next year, or maybe the year after, but it's probably year three and year four. Then, the idea is to recruit them, sort of immerse them into our culture, get them comfortable, get them well, competent, and then provide them with jobs. So, what are some of the things that, that we're agreeing to, as part of this collaboration, we're agreeing to, to do in addition to placing, placing them in buildings, providing PD, professional development, providing a location for you?
We should probably tell you April's role. Her role is different from mine. I'm actually on the faculty side, and she's actually like on the systemic development part here in Peoria on the ground. So, that's why sometimes I look to her for the technical stuff, and I'll speak more to curriculum pedagogy.
And I want to say, I think one of the assets that we can provide, starting summer of 2017, is a summer Step Up program, which means we can work, we can provide a summer enrichment opportunity with Step Up fellows to kind of fill that gap for that summer enrichment piece. I know we do the summer feeding program, but we'll be, we can add, we can have fellows work with District 150 teachers to create that experience, depending on how that works. Because the summer Step Up program is a four-week commitment that, that the candidate provides to the city, and they will do some type of academic enrichment in the morning. In the afternoon, they'll go out in the community and do internships, and in the evening, they get professional development. That is a huge investment.
So, to also answer Ms. Meyer's side, too, of it, so I think sometimes, to be realistic, based off the research, evidence-based research, let's be honest, sometimes our teachers are very boring, or sometimes our teachers are emotionally disconnected from the cultural communities that they work with. So, we have a lot of STEM professionals and educators who are doing what they're supposed to do. They know math, science, I'm forgetting one, engineering, like they know the back of their hand. However, they don't know adolescent culture, or they may not know adolescent culture. They may not understand particular ethnic groups' ways of learning, or they may not know, for example, here in Peoria, one day you can be in the school board meeting, tomorrow we'll see each other in a grocery store, and you're back in your classroom on Monday morning. So, it's also about the relationships that we're preparing our teachers for, and not just for doing basic chemistry and chemical reactions.
Yeah. Susan, Ms. G, can you also make some comments in terms of our obligation, when we've been working on that since December?
Sure. Some of the things we're going to do is include April in our Pathways work on STEM, so that she can be an integral part of that, and then student teachers want to be able to be a part of the Pathways as well. April's going to engage in a lot of our PD along the way, so she gets to know our district's culture and the work we're doing as well, and I think that will bring it all together, too. So, we have a little office for her that we'll put in together, so she's nearby.
So, if this is something that the board is willing to support in the community, we guarantee you it won't only have residual effects for the classroom, but also our larger city.
Ms. Chloe?
Yes, thank you. Very interesting. And you answered my first question, which is, what do we need to do to support it? And the second question, or not question, but comment is, I think this is an opportunity for Peoria Promise to do some very targeted work. I think they've refocused their efforts and have come to some conclusions about how they fund certain types of educational experiences. And I've talked to them about this over the past three years, on and off, and it seems to me that that would be one of the best investments Peoria Promise could be making is to investing in the students in the school district to become teachers in the school district. And if there's any way we can make that connection, either through the Pathways group or some other forum, that is so important, I think, to provide that, and it is much clearer exactly what they're trying to accomplish and we're trying to accomplish if we were going to do that.
That's a great idea. Let's work on that. I think that makes a lot of sense. So, today, I guess, if the board can say, Karat, go ahead, and we endorse this, continue to work with Robert Lee and the team at Illinois State University, I think that will suffice. And in about three months, we will get their draft in a, an agreement on, on MOU. Is that correct, team?
Yes, yes. So, we're looking at maybe eight to ten weeks to get some official paperwork from the university. The university takes a long time, let's put it that way.
Do I have your permission? I see it as a win-win, you know, for, for both of us, because the reality is, you know, the teachers that are coming out of college, you know, really could benefit from, from such a program. Ms. Jackson?
I absolutely agree with you, Mr. Floyd. I think that this just is the best opportunity for us to do this. But aside from all of that, what, what I see is something we've been talking about for a very long time, and that's having a more well-rounded teacher, in that we're teaching in an urban district is certainly more different than teaching somewhere else. And with this in place, it's just a win-win for us, it's a win-win for the kids and for this community. So, I'm hoping that, that we will agree to move forward and let Dr. Karat take this on and get it done.
So, we can't take a vote on it, but any other comments before we kind of like do a?
As long as that, and he gets it in the minutes, I think that will suffice, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need a consensus discussion, or?
Why don't we, why don't we get a consensus that we'd like to?
I would suggest that somebody just make a motion to authorize the superintendent to, to explore and participate, explore District 150's participation in the program, and to work toward the establishment of an MOU.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Would you call a row, please?
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye. Okay. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you for your time and your support of our children.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Performance contracting. Who's doing that? You go ahead, introduce them.
Does it need an introduction?
So, this is Dr. Phillips, and he wants to share some information with us regarding the topic of performance contracting. I've asked him, it's an, it's an interesting idea. There's a lot of potential for a district. I ask him to be in our midst today and just educate us a little bit more about what this means and some of the potential benefits.
means and some of the potential benefits to a district. Is that, is that good enough?
That's good enough.
Thank you for being with us, Doc.
You're welcome. Well, it's good to be Peoria District 150 again. I promise I won't talk as long as I did the last time I was here. In fact, Dr. Carrot has only given me five minutes, so I'm going to be talking like a car salesman to try to tell you the points that I'm going to. And by the way, Mr. Sierra, you'll be especially interested in some of the things I'm going to talk about, because your comments were a great segue. Basically, you have a small packet of information. And performance contracting is essentially an alternative method of renovating your capital facilities, which is an issue for all school districts that go through. And the bigger, larger, more complex districts like yours probably go through more machinations in their facilities, because you have so many different facilities and different locations and grade levels and so forth. So, I'm going to go through this cut-down version of what we talked about last week. Now, last week, we had a meeting that discussed this item specifically with your board president, your vice president, two other board members, your director of operations, your chief fiscal officer, and the superintendent. And we talked at length about that and answered a lot of questions about how it would work and so forth. So, basically, my role is to just kind of recap that for you and give you some of the basic differences. The first page has to do with the enabling legislation. In 1985, this legislation was passed by the legislature and allowed districts to use performance contracting as a method of renovating their capital facilities. And I actually remember that in 1985. I was a superintendent, and this was a brand-new issue, and caused a lot of stir and so forth. Some of the things that it can do, it talks about reducing utility costs. Now, a lot of times, when you fix up your capital facilities, that's not really the reason that you do it. Usually, what you do it is, is to make repairs or renovate something that has broken or needs to be fixed. You're basically reacting to different capital issues that happen. And in a larger, complex district like this, it's almost a continuous process of projects, projects, projects of all various different kinds, different buildings, HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, roofs, floors, cracked floors, anything like that. But this is, in particular, has an energy-saving focus. And there's every opportunity to identify the energy savings that come with these repairs and renovations. Some of them are a little easier, like lights, and improving the lumens and reducing electricity, so on and so forth, with a very quick payback period, and other things take a little longer. But this energy-saving component is not present in the projects that districts do now, and I think you've probably been doing. As to what is the ride range, the second page shows the different aspects that performance contracting can do. Short of building a brand-new building from the ground up, basically, anything can be handled with performance contracting. I take your attention to the bottom right, and these are some of the more exotic things that districts have done, with solar panels, wind turbines, geothermal installation, and so forth. There are districts in Illinois that have utilized those kinds of mechanisms to power their districts. And performance contract can do that if it's necessary. But basically, the length and the breadth of all the different projects you do or going to do or will do, other than building a brand-new building, can be handled with this. The third page has to do with the energy-saving piece again, existing funds for payments. Now, I understand that you've made an application, and I think Eric is going to talk about it in a few minutes, for some funds to do some building renovations, as well as some existing projects that the district already has in mind. But there are different kinds of energy savings. But as I said before, this energy-saving piece is a piece that basically you probably haven't had yet. But it's a very effective way to inform the public that you're aware of these issues and you're looking towards improving the efficiency of your facilities. Now, the next page is probably the one I'm going to talk about the most, because that's the mechanics of it. On the left side of the page is basically what you're doing now, or some variation of this. And on the right side of the page is performance contracting. And if I may, let me highlight a few of those that are very, very important for school districts. The first one, it says dollars spent basically before cost and scope. In other words, you have to plan whatever projects you're going to do with an architect or an engineer. You pay for those. And then you do specifications, then you bid it, and take the lowest responsible bidder. With performance contracting, the pre-engineering is done free. There is no charge to the pre-engineering that the company can do. We discussed at our last meeting, doing a complete district survey of all of your capital facilities, each and every one, would be looked at by engineers and specialists to prioritize some of the capital needs. And then you would basically just pick out or prioritize the projects that you wanted to do. But each and every building could be assessed and looked at. You can essentially do a strategic plan for your capital facilities in this manner. Most districts do not do this. They do not have the professional assistance or expertise to do this. Basically, the professional person that you deal with in this area is an architect. And architects would be used in performance contracting. But they have engineers, and they have computer people and so forth, to do a greater range of jobs. The second one has to do with cost. When you do these projects, and they are publicly bid, it's sort of a guessing game. Whoever puts the bid specs together puts some sort of estimation on what the different projects are. And then when the bids come in, it could be high or could be low, and so on and so forth. So, you never really know exactly how much you're going to need to do a certain project until after the bids are specs. Now, that's an issue that the performance contracting does not have. There is no estimation. Once a project is decided upon, and a price that is agreed upon by the firm and the district, there are no changes. There are no extra changes. And I call your attention to the fourth line item, a little word or series of words called a change order. Now, for those of you that have been in the construction business or worked with construction projects, these are invariably a huge inconvenience for the employer. What happens is, is these projects are bid, and sometimes knowingly bid low, knowing that they can recover their profit margin later with these change orders. In other words, the project is started, let's say you're going to do a new roof. Something happens when they start tearing off the old roof, oops, oops. You know, we have to do something we didn't plan. This is unforeseen. And so, they're, we're going to have to charge you more money. So, whatever you plan to spend on the project is not usually what you end up spending with the project. And this is a huge issue. And many times, this causes the projects to be reduced, because you have to spend extra money that you did not plan on doing it, or you have to find extra money. Both of those are not good options. Change orders are inherently an issue that performance contracting does not do. Once the price is settled upon, there are no change orders allowed in the project. So, whatever you thought you were going to spend on a project is what you will spend. And that's a huge difference and improvement that is inherent with performance contracting. Another one is you go down, it's a turnkey process. In other words, what you would essentially be doing is collaborating with a very large professional company that deals in construction projects of an infinite variety, which includes mechanical contractors, electrical contractors, environmental contractors, and so on and so forth. All of these people come under the umbrella of the performance contracting person, rather than your director of building and grounds. Right now, when you bid projects, the school district is in charge of the project and responsible for it. And in districts not as large as yours, the superintendent ends up really being the person in charge of the construction project. And superintendents have a lot of skills, but construction skills are not among them. And many times, you know, they, due to a lack of experience or whatever, are unskilled and dealing with managing construction projects. Now, you have a director of building and grounds who I met, and we talked about some of the features of this. I think he was rather pleased to see that some of that load would be removed from him and also your CFO, who gets involved in this, in the financial end of these projects, about how much they're going to cost and so forth. So, basically, what you're doing is, is you would be collaborating with a very large organization that can bring all kinds of professionals to the table for you, instead of just dealing with your architect and then taking each project individually as they come by. This could provide, I think, a huge improvement in the future. What you could look for and maybe plan for, building by building, issue by issue, on a district-wide schedule, rather than just, you know, one project in one building, one improvement in one building, and so on and so forth. On the next page, you'll see, again, the left and the right. You'll see on the left that the current method you use, and all these people all report and are all responsible to the school district. So, the entire construction project is basically managed by the school district, and you are responsible for it and the completion. With performance contracting, that responsibility shifts to the contractor, the performance contractor, and they are responsible for the project. So, if there's an issue, or a problem, or scheduling, or anything else, they handle it rather than your district staff. I personally use performance contracting on four occasions and found them to be infinitely more successful and easier on me as a superintendent when I wasn't in charge of the project. And basically, I was involved, but not in charge of the project and not responsible for the successful completion. And the last one is simply the process to do it. It is not an elaborate process to do this kind of improvement system for your district. Basically, you just do a memorandum of understanding. I think we talked about at the meeting last week, actually, having the engineers and the construction people go through each of your buildings, if that is your wish, and look at them, and basically prioritize the issues you have in each building. And then you can look at the district as a whole and kind of decide which projects have the most merit, or, you know, which are the highest priority for you to do. Basically, and then there is a competitive part of this process. And the competitive part is, is to pick the company. Now, they use a word called ESCO. And ESCO is simply the professional association of people that do this. And there are numerous companies that do this. Some of them are subsidiaries of very large corporations, which you're familiar with, Honeywell, Johnson Control, Trane, and so forth. And then there's a smaller group of independent ones that do it. Basically, what I found in my experience is that the subsidiary ESCO contractors usually always guided the project to their particular brand of materials that they were making. So, basically, that is the project, and that is how performance contracting can work. As you know, almost all construction projects are completed in the summer when the students are not here. But all the pre-planning, the pre-engineering, all of that would need to get started fairly quickly if you're going to do a lot of projects this summer. Now, let me stop there and see if you have any questions about it. It's a distinctly different system. And many hundreds of school districts in Illinois utilize this process to take care of their capital needs, big and small.
Any questions of Dr. Phillips? Ms. Chloe?
Any questions about the concept itself? I think Mr. Sierra's heard enough now.
I don't have any question about the concept itself, which I believe frankly has a great deal of merit. And I've spoken about this a couple times in these meetings, because it provides a tremendous differentiation of how you address these issues in terms of the payback on projects. We have used Ameren's Act on Energy for lighting, and they've provided, I think, about a 50% subsidy on lighting improvements throughout the district. We've done, I think, about $150,000 worth of that. So, I support the concept. I guess the two questions are, one is, you do an audit of the district's facilities, and then we get a list of projects. And I assume that there's a payback associated with each one, and we, in effect, make a decision based on the payback of each of those individual projects. So that you may have $10 million to $15 million to spend, but you may only want to spend $3 million right now, because that's got 18-month payback, and another $2 million has a five-year payback. So, you choose where you get your most return quickly.
Essentially, that is correct. Each of the things that might be identified by the engineers and construction people will probably have, along with it, a payback period, and how it would work, and how much it would work, and how much, that's a factor that you do not get with your normal concept now, because basically, the only professional you deal with in this arena is an architect. Now, architects are inherent in this process too. But basically, the entire construction project would be managed by a professional company, and that's really the difference. What you would have here is a collaboration with a major construction firm that has all of these experts and all of these people who can speak to these issues and look at them and be a part of it, rather than utilizing or insisting upon your own district-wide professionals. So, basically, you're partnering with someone who can do this. And then you decide which projects you want to do, and inherently, that will be maybe a payback period, and how that would work, or how long it would be, and so forth. And I'm sure that they can maintain these savings, or they can manage them and let you know each year how much savings is being stipulated and so forth.
Right.
Number two part of that was, I know we heard this presentation from this firm.
And my concern would be that we proceed with them doing a preliminary. There's a preliminary audit, and then there's really a technical audit that goes way down deep into the details after they get an agreement to do the work. My concern would be that, from a bidding standpoint, anybody that does the first audit, in effect, has an enormous knowledge advantage compared to anybody else that might be brought into a bidding project-type process and has 30 days to respond. So, you do all the homework, you've got all the information, then you say, okay, we're going to do it, we're going to open up for bids, it's, what, 30 days? And then anybody else that's an ESCO in the United States that wants to make a run at it can do that. But they have none of that base knowledge that the original firm has.
Any company?
Just a second. My concern there is, and I understand, and frankly, I think the firm that you're talking about here does really good work, but that seems a very asymmetrical process. And it would seem to me that we ought to at least think about, if we're going to do that, we ought to have not just a 30-day window, or we ought to have somebody else do the preliminary audit on their own, so that they're, in effect, bidding like-for-like.
Right. The process is a request for a proposal. But that, it's not like a standard request that you're going to be putting dollars to your proposal. Basically, it should be really an RFQ rather than an RFP, but that's the wording that they use. Because basically, you're picking a firm on their qualifications rather than their bidding for the process. It would be like bidding for a lawyer, you know, of taking low bids for, you know, a professional service, like an attorney or an auditor, same kind of thing.
My point is not that this is a pricing issue. This is a knowledge issue. And there's an asymmetry of knowledge for anybody that does the first audit, and then you go through an RFP.
Right.
And anybody else that jumps in, but they have a And anybody else that jumps in, but they have a very limited amount of time to gain the knowledge that the original firm might have. So this is not my objection to the process or to the individual company, it's just thinking about how we do this, so as not to disadvantage others that might be able to compete on this. And have other, I know that there are eight, I think, seven or eight major firms in the United States that do this. There's about 30 companies that do this as a matter, of course. I've researched this issue professionally for another situation, and it makes a lot of sense, but we need to think about how we go about it, that's all. And I hope you understand, we talked about this earlier.
Sure.
It's a good idea, it makes a lot of sense, we just need to make sure we do it right.
Right. All of the companies can't have the same opportunity, and you mentioned the 30 days. Once it's published in the paper for a request for a proposal professionally, all of the ESCO companies can see that and respond to that and come and inspect your facilities also.
Right.
But I think that's your concern.
That's my concern.
You know, if one is doing some pre-engineering for you, they might have an advantage over one who's just going to come and look and spend the 30 days doing that. But then afterwards, basically, it's, the request for a proposal is to pick a company. And then, once you pick a company, then you start going through your projects and determining what it is you're going to do, and how they're prioritized, and when, and so forth, and the details.
Dr. Williams?
Dr. Phillips, one of the things I, there's a page, I think, that's, I don't know if it was intentional, but I liked the page that had all of the school districts that this company did work for.
Yeah.
There were over 20 school, how many?
There were 80.
80 school districts, so that page is missing, but...
I didn't include that one because that was a little commercial.
Right.
You know, to show all the customers that they've had, but they do work in larger urban districts like the city of Chicago, city of St. Louis, so forth.
I have no doubt that they are qualified to do this.
Yeah.
Just put that on the record.
Is there anything else I could answer for you about the concept?
Well, I just wanted to highlight one of the reasons, when I sat in on the presentation, we've talked about, what, $10 million worth of health, life, safety-type repairs that need to be done? And one of the things that was interesting was that the performance contract concept would be able to really narrow down what needs to be done, and it may not be as costly as we think it is. Or they are also able, in some, did I hear him say, to challenge some of those health, life, safety issues that have been brought up.
Right. You currently have a document called your 10-year life safety survey, which is made by your architect. And the architect lists different issues that the architect feels need to be addressed and might be a code violation of one kind or another. I think your concern, Mrs. Ross, was that maybe some of these items didn't need to be on there or weren't as prioritized as much as they thought.
Or as expensive as...
Yeah, right. But once it gets on that list, you're very, you're pretty well obligated to do those things, so you have to be very careful about getting items listed on the 10-year life safety survey. And I'm sure a company would assist you with the 10-year life safety survey and looking at it, interpreting it, and making any modifications that you might need, and, you know, assist you in any regard with that. The items that they probably would look at would be outside of the 10-year life safety survey. So, you know, whatever they would identify would just, it would be up to you to determine whatever priorities you had for your facilities. The difference is, is you're doing it on a district-wide basis rather than projects, project, project, project individually.
So this is mostly information. Will anyone else have any questions?
Yes.
Dr. Phillips, I was just going to ask, I guess, when we think about spinning the problem on its head, is there a likelihood to have a downside in terms of overall cost, even though those, the change orders and the unforeseen costs are minimized? I mean, this company has to hedge their bets in some way, right, in order to...
They have to, they have to try to look at all issues and make sure that whatever, you know, you want to do and whatever they think they can do it for is going to include, you know, issues that may be unforeseen. They try to do the best they can to make sure they have researched those issues so that, you know, they can put them at a minimum. The method you're using now, there is no contingency plan like that. It's very open-ended, and the change order is really correct, you know, whatever was unforeseen originally. As far as downside, we also talked about your local labor issues, and actually, what you can do with this process, you can guarantee your local labor organization's participation in these projects, which you cannot do with the current system that, of your bid and specs that you're doing. You can't guarantee that you're going to use local, you know, firms, local laborers, and so forth, and I think you do have a labor agreement with some of the, you know, labor unions, and that could be guaranteed, which you can't do with this other method. So it has some advantages. I think because of that, there's an initial thought that since you're not bidding every single project with the lowest responsible bidder, that your local labor organizations would be not utilized as much, but actually, it can be the reverse, they can be used more.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, it's a big decision. It's something that's very encompassing and district-wide, but it works, and it has worked for hundreds of districts in Illinois. It's very widely utilized to some extent. And other than building a brand-new building, a lot of districts, you see, they just go through this process. By the way, if you want to continue the process for the following year, you don't have to go through the process every single time, you know, you can continue your projects with the same format that you did before. Each of your projects have to be individually designed, specs, written, bid process, and so on and so forth, change orders, all that.
Okay.
Do we need to provide any action by the board, or just move ahead here?
That would really be up to you.
I think we, in the meeting the other day, we talked about proceeding with providing some information in terms of utility bills and some other things.
Right.
Mr. Bush, do you have...
That's how, basically, they get started with the process of the energy savings, is to look at what your current energy level is now.
Right.
And then measuring it afterwards.
So we don't need to take any formal action at this point?
At some point, you know, if you are interested in the project, probably something like a memorandum of understanding.
Right.
Would be sufficient, more or less like you did with your other motion that you made for Illinois State, something like that. But that's up to you. And I know this is a brand-new concept, and most of you had not heard about this, other than maybe Mr. Chloe had, you know, researched it, you know, for another purpose. So it's a lot to think about, but it does have its definite advantages. And if you think about it, I think, you know, it can provide, I think your director of building grounds was pleased with what he heard, and I'm not sure about Eric, you know, if he was pleased about it, too, but I think he was pleased that he wouldn't be responsible for doing all those projects. He would have been responsible for, maybe notwithstanding this.
It's always hard to know when Eric's pleased, so be easy on yourself. I think our trigger point really is hearing back from ISBE and whether or not we get the QSCP authorization. I mean, we really have our fingers crossed on that, and that drives a lot of decision-making. $15 million, obviously, is five times 3 million, and it's a lot more work to be done. I think the prioritization that staff put in to the project list that you'll vote on tonight, you know, distilling some 1,100 individual projects of both, or, I'm sorry, you know, not just health, life, safety, but building principals and academic information officer requests, as well as ongoing projects and projects of the nature of urgent and desired. I mean, all of that has to be taken into consideration. In addition to staffing, you know, we're at a point where we're at a low at our manpower. We have some uncertainty in our ongoing technical leadership, so let's wait and see what ISBE comes back with, and I think we can roll very quickly from that point about going forward on decision matrix.
So how soon will we, once the application is submitted, will, by the next board meeting, will we know anything, you think?
I think in a week or so, isn't it?
I, you know, I think it's a product of how many applications ISBE receives versus the bureaucracy's ability to process them.
Okay, so at our next board meeting, we'll get an update?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay.
But I will say, I know they only have one person working on the program, so if all 800 districts decide to, you know, submit an application, that makes it.
They'll probably call in temporarily.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips.
You're welcome, thanks.
If anyone has any additional questions, you know, Dr. Karat can give it to the right person.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to do an overview of nepotism policy?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Or proposed?
Proposed, yes. Thank you. This is on behalf of the Policy Committee. At the last meeting, and I'm just going to sort of summarize here, we did have a situation that arose recently that called into question some of these issues, but it was apparent, Dr. Karat looked into this, that we have no formal policy on this issue. And what we have is a draft of a policy. The purpose is to avoid conflicts of interest and favoritism or their appearance, and it's not intended to discriminate against or discourage family members from seeking employment in District 150. The draft that we put together is based on research into other Illinois school districts' anti-nepotism policies and materials from the Illinois Council of School Attorneys and the Illinois Association of School Boards. And it really appears that there should be two policies, one for the Board of Education, which would probably be policy 2:90, and a separate policy for the General Administration Section on Employment under 3:20. The policy defines the type of relationships that are involved, and it prohibits direct supervision of a relative or a family member. It would require board members to disclose family relationships and abstain from voting on any employment action regarding a relative. It provides for exceptions where certain parties' positions are difficult to fill, and it provides remedies for resolving situations that come into conflict with the policy. It's not retroactive, but any prohibited subordinate relationships would have to be remedied before the start of the next school year. It does not apply to short-term, part-time, or temporary employees such as substitute teachers, summer help, or game workers, and it does not make an employee ineligible for continued employment if a relative assumes office as a board member. So that's a summary of the points, and it, we're going to have another board, or another policy meeting on Wednesday, and we'll take this up again, but I wanted to fill in on where that is. I think this is an appropriate issue for discussion and an area that we might want to seriously consider. Yes, ma'am?
I have, as I go through this, I have some concerns I'd like you to consider as a policy committee.
Okay.
First of all, under definitions of family member, I understand, well, first of all, let me say that I have, I have no problem with having some kind of a policy about relatives being direct supervisors of their own relatives. That was one of the first questions that I wondered is where this came from all of a sudden, because I don't think we've had a whole lot of issues with this, and I think the issues we've had in the past have been resolved amicably. But, you know, we talk about spouse, mother, father, sister, brother, child, aunt, uncle, niece, or nephew. There are a lot of people who have very close friends or significant others that they're closer to either than a brother, or a sister, or a niece, or a nephew. So I have a problem with the definition and, because if, this could, I mean, this could prohibit a niece or nephew of someone from being hired for a position when they're not close to the person at all. That's one of my first things. The other thing is, it sort of gives a little bit of a way it would be remedied as far as transferring and that, and I think we need to be very careful about what you put in the policy, because every bargaining unit has language in their contract about how that works. And this policy is never going to supersede a negotiated contract, so, and probably it can be fit together, but we need to look at that very carefully, the union contracts. On the board part, when it says that a board member must abstain from any vote that has to do with employment, does that encompass voting on negotiated contracts with a bargaining unit? Because I will tell you, it is not inconceivable that four board members could be related to teachers at the same time, which means you would not have a quorum to approve a contract.
And I think the intention there is a specific individual, not a contract, as a whole.
Okay.
Right.
The other thing I will say is I will not support any language in a policy that is going to require someone to resign.
Okay.
That's just how I feel. I, if you get, because in one part of this, it says, if accommodations are not feasible with affected employee suggestions, the HR director in consultation with the superintendent shall determine which employee must resign in order to resolve the situation. So either the supervisor or the employee, this is saying, would have to resign. I will not support any language that says someone has to resign. There's got to be a way to resolve the issue. So those are some of the concerns I have. I also think, I don't know, this gets very, and I know you pull this from other policies that gets very wordy, I think, even though it tries to be specific, it gets very vague. I think it's going to be very difficult in some of these instances as far as definitions and relationships and things like that to enforce if push comes to shove, so I just think those are some of the things I have concerns about with the policy that I just want you to think through.
And that language was taken from a number of policies.
Well, I saw that, yeah, and I understand that, but it just, you know, in this day and age, the other question I had is, okay, if you get into significant others, domestic partners, who's going to make the determination that it is, it fits within this definition?
I think primarily for the Building Committee, the composition, I think I heard, was supervising, so a remedy could be just changing the supervisor, for example.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But I just, you know, I just want us to be real careful about that, but I don't like the language that says that eventually somebody might have to resign, because I find it difficult to believe we couldn't find some kind of solution for it.
Well, and that's why you have, that's why we wanted to get it in front of everybody to see that, rather than just have, just, oh, by the way, here it is. This is the start of the process to discuss.
Sure, I understand, and it says draft, and that's why I wanted to bring those things up tonight.
And it's, I had the same concerns as I read that, having done these things before. And when you start talking about nieces, nephews, step, whatever, it's almost impossible to have people move around, shift around, resign, and do whatever you want them to do. And that, usually, the list is not that long when you start identifying people. But we're in a pretty large school district. It's almost impossible to have someone that's not a significant other, a relative, or whatever, in a district, and I may come on and not know they're here. That's highly possible.
And you know, the thing is, we also have a history in this district of generations of families who work at the same time. And, you know, we talk all the time about trying to recruit and keep good employees, not only good employees, but to grow our own administrators. I see this as a real obstacle to that, because I think someone could, at some point, say, wait a minute, okay, I would really like to take that principal's job, but if my wife has to quit in order to do it, and you're losing out on a good administrator, those are the kinds of concerns I have.
I think, if I, you know, when I read it, I didn't get that at all. I know we had a real problem a few years ago with principal supervising his wife. And, you know, this wasn't just one, so...
No, but I mean, the one I'm thinking...
It's about supervision.
Right, and the one I'm thinking of was eventually moved, but...
Well, it was, but nobody did anything until it was called to the...
But the problem is, okay, but the problem is, either you don't give the principal that job, or if there isn't a place for the wife to move to, I mean, that's what I'm saying, and that's where the union contracts are going to come into it, too, because, okay, let's say there's one opening, and you could move the wife to that opening, but there's somebody with more seniority who wants that open, it just, you know, I just think...
You can really run into some problems, as I read, as I read that, you can really run into some problems. I mean, you know, I work in a place that has over, almost 600 employees. I mean, you know, I work in a place that has over, almost 600 employees. There are brothers, sisters, aunts, and uncles working all over the place, and some end up being in a department while that person is not their supervisor. They're still there. What you don't want is have somebody have direct supervision over anybody. But I think that... But that, really, this doesn't tell me that.
This goes way beyond that.
It doesn't, it doesn't tell me that. And if I have children that go to school to want to be a teacher, and they want to come back here and work, they can't come back here and work.
Doesn't say that.
No, not at all.
Well...
Doesn't say that. All it says is, "If they want to be hired, you should abstain from voting on their employment contract."
Well, I can understand that, but still...
But that's what we've been doing.
That's the point.
But still, as you read this, it really is not... There are a lot of areas that's just not clear, and I think that we need to really look at it and work through it to make sure we're not in a position to say, "You can't come to work District 150 because, and it's because of a nepotism policy," and we lose good people, or we start shifting people around, and like she said, in a union contract, you're not going to be able to do that anyway. So, we need to really look at it and look at that list of people that are family, because when you start talking about step this and aunts and uncles and, you know, there are people that are my relatives I don't even know, and I find out they're working for District 150.
Well, that's why you write a draft with everything in it, and then you start cutting.
Yeah, but we really need to look at it. I just, it was confusing a little bit to me, so...
Well, that's very good input. Any other comments or questions? I think there's a couple steps we have to go through. One of them is to go back and revisit that language to clarify that, and then I think we're going to have to... Second step would be to reconcile it with any contractual language to make sure we're not in conflict with that.
Right.
We're not trying to supersede or throw out contract language. Then the third thing is, I think independent counsel's going to have to look at this just in terms of its alignment with the current law and what is in place. I know Mr. Rettberg has had a good deal of experience with this as both an attorney and a sitting board member in another district, but they probably also have some specialists in this area that would do it.
And I know you looked at press also, what press was recommended, which is Illinois State, so great feedback, though.
So, there's a lot to be considered here, but I thank you for the comments, and we will do our best to get something that is useful and acceptable.
Yeah, I think it's a good move, because I believe you should have a nepotism policy. We just need to make sure it...
We don't want to paint ourselves into a corner here. We want to do the right thing and do it in a way that is not a disadvantage to any employee or the district.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And we need to understand things differently. I thought it was a good first step.
Well, everybody reads it differently.
I'd say it was not a good first step.
You just have to start somewhere.
No, I'm saying what I thought.
Well, that's, and that's why I wanted to get it in front of you, to have this discussion, because we can't do this in a policy meeting sometimes, because you're just not all there, and it's much better to have it here and just sort of think about it. So, thank you very much, appreciate that, and we'll move ahead.
Okay, report of requests under the freedom of information.
Okay, freedom of information, there are three parts, new requests. We received two requests, two new requests, and of these requests, both fulfilled. Then, under pending request status, there were two pending requests noted on the December 14th Board Report, and both of those were filled. And then, just the total run-in amount in terms of cost, it's $5,805.89 to fill these requests.
Okay.
And we have zero requests for this calendar year so far.
Great, thank you. I want to go back to number eight, which was the approval of minutes for December 14th, 2015, and those have been pulled and postponed until the next board meeting. I meant to say that, but I skipped right over that. I'm good at skipping tonight, it looks like. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Any questions, comments for Mr. Bush?
Anything out of the ordinary?
No, sir. I'll use the rule in customary.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing that, consent agenda, Mr. Cloy.
Thank you, Madam President. I will read the consent agenda tonight, which, item number one consists of gifts to the school district. This meeting, $1,050, and year-to-date, $66,265.19. Proposed action is the following donations be accepted and alleged appreciation sent to the donors. School uniforms valued at $50 by Julie Weber to Glen Oak Community Learning Center, and a cash donation valued at $1,000 by Glenn Fork to Richwoods High School Special Education Department. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, the Human Resources report. The proposed action is the appointment, employment compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, and discharge of an employee. Item number four, payment for travel. Item number five, settlement approval, minor settlement lawsuit, number 15 SC 274, pending in the Circuit Court of Peoria County. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the settlement of a minor small claim lawsuit for alleged personal injuries against the district and one of its teachers in the amount of $3,900. Item number six, field trip approval, Richwoods High School, Purdue University. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Richwoods High School ROTC cadets to attend the annual drill meeting per Board Policy 6:240. Students will travel to West Lafayette, Indiana on February 5, 2016, and return on February 6, 2016, to participate in the annual ROTC Drill Meet event hosted by Purdue University. There is no cost to cadets. The U.S. Marine Corps JROTC will pay all expenses. Item number seven, field trip approval, Peoria High School cheerleading. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Peoria High School Cheerleading Squad per Board Policy 6:240 as presented. The Peoria High Cheerleading Squad will be traveling to the Holiday Bowl in San Diego, California, the Alamo Bowl in San Antonio, Texas, or the Russell Athletic Bowl in Orlando, Florida, on December 26, 2016, through January 1, 2017, to participate in one of the above named bowl games. Transportation, meals, and hotel expenses will be paid through fundraising efforts. Breakfast and lunch are provided. Each student is responsible for dinner expenses. Item number eight, qualified school construction bonds. The proposed action by the Board of Education is that the Board of Education submit to the Illinois State Board of Education the attached application for $15 million in qualified school construction bonds. Qualified school construction bonds, or QSCB, are a U.S. debt instrument created by Section 25... I'm sorry, Section 1521 of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. Section 54F of the Internal Revenue Code covers QSCBs. These QSCBs allow schools to borrow at a nominal 0% rate for the rehabilitation, repair, and equipping of schools. The Board of Education hereby directs Interim Financial Officer Bush to submit the application to ISBE prior to January 15, 2016. Item number nine, the YMCA license agreement. The proposed action is that the Board of Education extend its agreement with the YMCA to provide before and after-school programming at Charter Oak, Thomas Jefferson, Keller, and Woodrow Wilson. This agreement originally commenced on February 1, 2013. As per the original agreement, the district has opted to extend services for the 2016-17 school year, and there is no cost to the district. Item number 10, LBS-1 certification classes, Western Illinois University joint agreement. Proposed action is both Peoria School District 150, known as the district, and the Peoria Federation of Teachers, known as the union, acknowledge the need for additional endorsements for certified teachers. This document shall serve to summarize the agreement between the union and a district on this date as identified below. One, this is a nonprecedent setting agreement. Two, this agreement is intended to support students by allowing teachers to obtain additional LBS-1 endorsement through Western Illinois University. Three, the parties agree to extend the deadline for submission of the application for approval of course and/or professional reimbursement request paperwork to Human Resources to January 15, 2016, at 4:00 p.m. This extension applies to the Western Illinois University SPED 551 only, with a start date of January 19, 2016. Four, the parties agree to extend the deadline for submission of the preapproval for course of study for advanced degree or additional certification area paperwork to Human Resources to January 15, 2016, at 4:00 p.m. as well. Any certified teacher seeking this endorsement will not be required to attach an ISBE evaluation and deficiency notice for this course of study form. And that concludes the consent agenda, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Cloy. Are there any items any board member would like pull for a separate vote? Okay, in that case, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Motion second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments?
I have just a couple of questions.
Okay.
First of all, I just want to thank staff and Mr. Bush again for the compilation on the qualified school construction bonds. I think it's a large potential investment for a district, kind of a rare opportunity at this kind of financing cost, and I... It's a broad range of projects which we've identified. It should, could be very helpful. Question is, relative to items six and seven, at least it's implied in the text that there's no cost to the district for either of these field trips. Does anybody have any historical context why we have the board approve field trips that don't have any kind of monetary...
The policy says out of state, has to be approved by the board.
Ah, yeah. We've still brought field trips that are in-state, though, I know that.
Yes, we have to vote for our children to go from any field trip. I think it's in the policy.
Okay. I'm asking, why is it in the policy, at least if it's in-state?
I didn't think we did all field trips.
But these two are out of state, I guess, that's something we can't have state.
Yes, I think there are some that involve overnight travels within the state of Illinois, and if it's overnight, you have to have the appropriate chaperones and documentation for that. I think that's a state school code issue.
I think it's something to do with the, you know, during the school day as well, isn't it?
Right, well, it makes it clear that the event is a school district-sponsored event. There are... Sometimes, these things are put on by other organizations, and so it involves insurance and all that sort of thing as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that might be something to look into, because I...
Does that have anything to do with our transportation issues as well? Because the transportation expense is involved if they're traveling on our buses and so forth.
And I would think that there are students, and we're still responsible for them.
We're still responsible for them. There was something that came up some years back about that, because, you know, if they're even in the district and going to travel to another part of the district, they still... It still has to be permission by the parents, you know, and we take responsibility for that.
Right, but those don't come to the board.
If it's overnight, if it's overnight anywhere or outside the state of Illinois, I think it... Is that the...
Ms. Johnson, I know you...
If it's overnight, you guys have to approve it, so, because we're responsible for these kids overnight. If it's within the state and it's during the daytime, and then it allows the superintendent or his or her...
I was going to say, somebody still approves it.
His or her designate, we have to approve it.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And then out of state, you have to approve as well, because they're representing the district.
Okay.
But for in-district or in-state, that's not overnight, the superintendent or his or her designate approves.
Okay. You have a question? Is that clearing it up?
Clear as mud, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Okay.
Just a question about the license agreement. What type of programming is provided by the YMCA?
Just after school.
Just after school, before and after school? Okay, thank you.
And that is a parent-paid?
I know, it's renewal. I just wasn't familiar with what they did.
So, the parents pay that, right? Right.
Okay.
Okay. Would you please call the role?
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilkine?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Deliberation agenda, expulsions.
Item 11, expulsions. The proposed action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated January 11, 2016, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilkine?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Item 12, expulsion, with the expulsion to be held in abeyance. Proposed action is that expulsions with the expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report dated January 11, 2016, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilkine?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Item 13, revocation of board probation. The proposed action is that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated January 11, 2016, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilkine?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you. Presentations and suggestions by board members? Presentations or suggestions by board members? None? Okay, reports from board committees? You've already reported on yours. Building Committee reported through. Do you guys have anything?
Building Committee spent a fair amount of the time talking about the QSC bonds, so...
Any other committees?
Yes, the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee, chaired by myself and Mrs. Jackson. We're scheduled to meet this Thursday, January 14th, at 5:00 p.m. here. Again, we are working with the Policy Committee in regards to Senate Bill 100, and also Michelle Coconati is leading this subcommittee in regards to parental involvement, so...
Okay.
Those that are interested, parent, teacher, community stakeholder, please come out and join us for a discussion.
Did you say what time, 5:00?
5:00 p.m. this Thursday.
Okay.
In the media room, back there.
Anything else for the good of the order? May I have a...
I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
14.